Well, they were downtown. They turned the corner.
They're at the away.
Oh, okay, because they were, they were actually on the lawn. We got a tip about it and we went and they weren't here. And we're like, oh, okay.
They're just moving.
Okay.
But you know, I've been in the first job in the Middle East since you got rid of the regular. I've never seen one on a street.
Yeah, that's so cool.
You on for Thursday? Thursday, Thursday evening?
Oh, yeah, yep, 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 yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I live right next door, so.
He's gonna say, what the hell would I sign up for?
Yeah, I live right next door. My grass is dead on purpose, just so you know. I don't.
Yes.
Recording in progress.
Oh, I was supposed to run over there. That's so early. Get my contact tomorrow.
It's recording, we're not broadcasting, but the Zoom, the Zoom platform is recording. This is not over. You're good to go. I mean, we'll have coffee, but it's not what everyone will see. And we can totally make it into a guest.
Right off the record.
Oh, okay.
And just turn the volume. Yeah. It could be coming down.
I had one of those. Important. In the case of five years. Yeah. So you guys have some. Yeah, or like. Years. I work with you. Well, all I know is you're not on your guy.
And so I have no issue with either of them. I think anything that we can do to help, we should do so that they can get their projects started. Thank you.
Counselor Kaposansky.
Yes, I move that we award the two grants that have been listed for us here.
Second.
Your Honor.
Oh, we have to do it Wednesday, don't we?
Your Honor, these are on the consent agenda for Wednesday.
They're on the consent agenda, folks. So, I just want to say, go ahead, Counselor Olson.
Yes. We're taking $100,000 out of the, what do we call it? The...
Economic Development.
Water Sewer Economic Development Fund. And how much does this cost per year for the average sewer water user?
So, let me make sure I understand your question. You're saying, how is this funded?
No.
Is it from an enterprise fund or general fund?
No.
Okay.
You're going to take money out of the sewer water fund that users give money to.
So, this is separate...
They give $100,000 a year, right?
Sorry, Counselor Olson, this is two separate funds that were created for economic development projects specifically.
So, you're not taking any money out of the water sewer fund?
These are two funds called the Economic Development Water and Sewer Fund, but separate from, I think, what you're talking about. And I think that the fund numbers were actually noted here in the memo as well.
Well, I sure misunderstood your memo then. So, that gets to $500,000.
In total, correct.
And then you take money out of it.
Each fund has $500,000 in it, and what we proposed is a combined 250 from each fund for these projects. So, they'd be replenished, so they'd be down to $250,000 apiece and then replenished over the next two and a half years.
Yeah. What rate do the water sewer users?
Sir, Christopher, the Director should come up and speak to that point. Thank you, Christopher.
Well, certainly, Mr. Sherry knows how many dollars he expects out of it. Maybe he doesn't. Do you?
Counselor Olson, these are, so there's one fund and one program in the water fund and one in the sewer fund, right? Okay? Each of those, we budget $500,000 per year.
Per, who?
And...
A billion dollars per year out of sewer and water?
$500,000 each, yes. And...
And they have an income that high?
Well, they're just, it's just part of our regular appropriation of funds within...
I understand all that stuff, yes.
Okay.
But how much money do you extract from the sewer and water users?
Well, these programs are, do come from water rate or sewer rate...
Yes.
Dollars. Well, however much is spent. So, let's say, so last year, for instance, $0 were spent out of these, either of these programs.
Yes, I understand that.
So, let's say we spend $125,000 in water economic development for a project, then in the next budget cycle, we will put $125,000 back in to start the year at $500,000. So, those funds are replenished.
Paid by the...
Ratepayers.
Ratepayers.
Yes.
So, 125 times two is 250,000?
Right. Whatever it comes out, so if you award these amounts that come out, then at the beginning of the next year's budget, we will re-budget those to start.
And how many users do we have for sewer and water?
How many users?
Yes.
I think we have about 19,000 accounts now.
So, if you divide 250,000 by 19,000, you get the number, right?
Well, no, it's not. I mean, it's not quite that simple because there are different rate structures for different customer classes.
I'm talking about the average, yes.
Yeah, well, we could figure that out for you.
Some more, some less, but average. You can't, you can't figure out 250 divided by 19?
I'm not going to do math in public. I don't, I have a strict rule about not doing math in public.
Okay, well, I'll do it at home.
As a biology major.
And when I hear complaints about how high our water and sewer rates are, I'll be able to answer that. Part of it goes to economic development.
Right. It does. Part of it does go to economic development.
And I guess I'll ask them whether they approve of...
Sure.
Yeah, and they'll say, well, I guess I'll quit. Well, it's not a matter of flushing the toilets, it's a matter of, well, it is too, it's water use.
Well, I mean, I think the intention back in 2003 or whenever this process was set up is you encourage...
If it's yellow, let it mellow. If it's brown, flush it down.
Well, that is good advice, but I think the intention was, when these funds were set up, is to encourage, or help businesses in particular.
I'm well aware of that.
And then they eventually will pay in to the water and sewer funds through their businesses. So, that's kind of the underlying idea.
They're only going to have 12 employees and they'll probably, probably live in Corvallis.
Well, but they're going to pay an Albany water bill and a sewer, Albany sewer bill for these businesses. Right, when they connect to the system. I think that's the general...
I doubt if it'll be 250,000.
Theory. Well, hopefully, if they stay here long enough.
Well, that's going to be a big, that's a lot of separating cardboard or whatever it is.
That a Counselor?
I didn't get an answer, but I got figures to work with.
Okay, thank you. Any other Counselor have any comments or questions? Director Sherry, Commissioner Sherry?
You know, just in closing, I tried to pretty scientifically outline the return on investment here. And if you look at that table I included in the end of the memo, we don't make this up. There is significant impact from manufacturing-related jobs to our economy, both here locally and at the state level. And that's generally gauged in what they call an upper downstream impact, direct jobs created and indirect jobs supported. This is a wonderful thing for the community, and I appreciate your questions and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Counselor Smith has a comment.
I just wanted to comment that recognizing that there aren't facilities like this available in much of western Oregon, if not the rest of the state, this will go a little, this will fill a gap in the economic development of the state. And to me, it adds another definition of Albany as hub city.
Yeah.
It makes us another type of hub.
Right.
And I think that's very nice.
And as Chris Hansen noted, that idea of diversification is so important here. This isn't just expansion of existing sorts of companies. This is gives space for new companies doing new things that complement existing companies and then have employees who shop at local restaurants and shops and that kind of thing as well.
So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? I'm a businessman. I own my own business, and I love the idea of what you're doing. Mine, I shuffle paper and talk to people, but I know that there's people that build things that want to manufacture here. I think it's wonderful that this is happening, and I hope to see more of it as we move forward. So, great job. Thank you, gentlemen, for bringing your business to town. And I'd love to see your facilities. We all would when you're done and ready to go.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So, we're going to go back to Christian Dell on the Unnecessary Noise Ordinance, AMC 7.08.050, page 2 through 5 in your packet.
Sorry for being late. I had a dangerous building item I had to deal with.
We'll adjust.
So, the noise ordinance in front of you is kind of a deep dive after we had multiple complaints about some churches and the YMCA play center. And then just kind of going through, I ended up looking at Corvallis, Wilsonville, Eugene, Springfield, Lebanon, Portland, the Oregon Administrative Rules, Tuallaton, and Lake Oswego. I also contacted the Oregon State Licensing Board for Childcare Centers just to see what their rules were, to kind of understand, kind of a holistic look at what the problems were. And out of that came, well, the state doesn't regulate that, they defer to the city. And kind of just understanding that our code was set up a little differently. So, trying to bring in what the rest of the cities are doing and encompassing what the code as a whole was meant to do and what was it meant to deal with. I know when I worked in dispatch prior to this position, a lot of times we'd get noise ordinance calls in, and it would be kind of up to the person complaining about the noise to file that citation because there is really no hard and fast definition of what it was. This revision is geared to hopefully better define what we're looking for to address. As far as the YMCA and people coming and talking about that, this will not address that. When looking at codes throughout the state, there was no code that I could find that would address anything. We would be the first city to ever look at doing that. In fact, there was Portland, Portland's code specifically said this is not to regulate children at play. That's the only children I could find listed in any of the codes. But other than that, there's a couple other revisions to our current code that are in there, such as during construction, our old code stated that you could work within 30 minutes for a three-hour period, meaning if you wanted to work at 1:00 a.m., you could work till 1:30. And then again, at 4:30, you could work till 5:00. It was something that nobody really looked at, but it was definitely a loophole that I could play with my neighbor if I really hated them. So, we took that out, and it's just 30 minutes before, which would be 6:30, and 30 minutes after, which would be 7:30, which is really the intent of what that was meant to be, is give you a 30-minute prep time before and after to put away, take out your tools, therefore closing that little loophole. So, that's in there, that's under Section E. And then a few other things. If a contractor wanted to get a noise permit to, say during the hottest day of the year, wanted to work earlier, they would have to bring that to City Council to actually get that filed and approved, which is kind of a long process for something that's pretty easy. So, those are also changed in there to be what our other noise permits are for, where it's more of an administrative filing that goes through the PD. So, it's just going to be grouped into what our current process is already for big parties or ordinary festival, that stuff. Other than that, pretty much from K on to O are what our ordinance, what our ordinance was missing that a majority of other cities that I looked at have within theirs. That's not to say I'm steadfast on that they have to be there, but it was just trying to, again, address what noise ordinance codes are actually looking at and not just a neighbor complaining about a neighbor. So, that's kind of the whole thing. If you have any specific questions on what it is, I'm happy to answer them.
Counselor Johnson, your first up.
Yes, thank you. It's kind of interesting that this would come up tonight, but first of all, what you said about contractors, we have a four-building area being built just two doors down from me.
Yeah.
And during the hot days, you know, I hated to see those guys on the roof. But, is it, okay, you don't, they don't have to go through the council and stuff because that's kind of like on a day-by-day basis. I mean, all of a sudden, it might be 80 today, but it's going to be 100 tomorrow. So, did you say that they could just call somebody and get it approved?
So, the old code would be a council decision.
Okay.
So, this one would not be. This addresses that so that it's not such a strenuous process in case the fluctuations happen.
Then the other thing is, it just so happened that last week, went for some sort of procedure over at the clinic over in Corvallis, and the nurse was telling us, we says, "Do you live in Corvallis?" She says, "No, I can't afford to live in Corvallis. I found a place in Albany." And so I says, "Oh, great." You know, my husband offers, "Well, this is your counselor," you know? And she says, "Well, can you do something for me?" I says, "I'll try. Can you do something about the revved-up engines that go through our neighborhood every day, every morning, every night?" And I said, "That's funny. I was going to bring up the same thing because we have motorcycles. I swear they don't have to do what they do. I have a neighbor that has a souped-up car or something. There's got to be something. Other cars don't make that much noise. So, what can we do for those? Because it's irritating, very."
So, there's a, I guess, multiple layers of answering that question. One would be that is a traffic officer issue. So, I know when Scott McBride, who's retired, or even Lieutenant Hayes was doing traffic, that was stuff that they addressed. That would be like a disconnected muffler or just one that's flat-out illegal. And if you, if you look in here...
Viper cutout.
Something about a cutout or something?
A muffler cutout, we do have a muffler cutout, yeah. So, that's what that would fall under. But we don't have the officers patrolling, doing traffic currently unless they're on free time. So, yes, that's something we could address even today, but not something we often get out and do.
If I could find out the exact same time they go to work every morning and they report it, somebody could maybe come by and...
Yeah.
Sit there and listen to it and then do something then?
I mean, our, our old traffic officer is Officer Tress. He's now an FTO when they pulled back our traffic, so I'm sure he would be well up to knowing what needed to be done on that.
Okay.
In fact, I have the old decibel reader for that kind of stuff that our traffic officers used to carry on my desk.
You know, it's just, it's irresponsible and it's just wrong. Thank you.
Counselor Kaposansky. Chris and Bessie, to your points, there's multiple decibel meters that you can get and add to your phone. So, if somebody's coming by, you can have that turned on, and it'll definitely tell you exactly what the decibel rating is of that wherever you're at or vehicle coming by or something like that. And it might trip one of the lines that we've got for noise abatement.
And just...
How would your old Saab have rated on that?
Possibly could, but that car's gone now.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, that's a shame.
But actually, that's one thing I love about him. I know when I'm getting up in the morning because he starts his car, so.
Sounds like my neighbor.
So, I'm curious about a couple things. One, what you said just now about decibels made me think, what if we based an ordinance for noise purely, or at least consider the decibel rating, regardless of whether it was the engine of a car, the muffler of a car, a kid screaming, or a yard full of children screaming? And to that point, because I'm really concerned about the DeRosas who brought their, their situation before us quite some time ago, and I think it's been like a year and a half that they've been dealing with. I guess there's been some attempt at sound muffling, and I don't know how effective it has been. But to me, it at least seems maybe worth considering the decibel of whatever it is that's going on. And, you know, when you say, well, no other city addresses children, well, every single ordinance that's on the books, when you're looking, somebody's got to be the first. And I'm not trying to say anything against the YMCA and the good things they do. I'm just saying it shouldn't be, life shouldn't be untenable for anyone.
So, when I go through a code and do research, I look at multiple things. One would be how are we going to enforce it? And the rest would be, I don't try to write a code or look at other cities to solve one issue. So, when, when writing a code like that and looking at the state standard for, you know, what do we, what do, what does it govern at the state? And then they let us do a little more strict and a little more strict. At the state standard, they say that zones such as churches, schools, and care centers like that are the protected center. So, if you're making noise to them, they're protected.
I see.
Outside of that, it has nothing going the opposite way.
Okay.
And then when I dig, when I think about that further, and then you start regulating, say, the YMCA, if I were to go read, do a decibel reader at any play center, you know, elementary school, you're probably going to get a louder reading across the street from that. So, then what, are we going to start enforcing that? So, you have this like ripple effect of complaints that you could get trying to solve the one problem that, yes, I feel bad for them and their issue, but it's kind of becomes overreaching.
Yeah. Well, I, I think I was not quite aware about what you just stated, that of course, anything that does childcare is right up there with a school or that it would be considered in the protected class. I guess I'll just hope that maybe there's something more they can do to mitigate the noise to whatever degree.
Yeah, and the reason in this code that I didn't add decibels, out of all those lists I've read off to you, there's only two of those cities that actually have a specific decibel level, and it, it varies based on what zone you're in and all that kind of stuff. So, to base it down to the easiest levels that officers don't know what zone they're in, industrial, light industrial, all that, a lot of cities just go, if you go on the next property and you could hear plain English people talking like they're next to you, that is considered a violation. If, so that's how it kind of plays out in all of those cities where they don't want to have officers carry decibel meters, know what zone they're in, and know exactly the level they have to look for, which I think is an easier and more effective way of doing it. So, that's why I kept it to that level.
Thank you. Any other Counselor have anything? Okay, thank you very much.
Counsel, Counsel Bartholomew.
Oh, sorry, Counsel Bartholomew.
Thank you, Mayor. I, Chris, I, I was just noticing that, you know, you have new language and it's, all of it, it's in red. And at the very bottom, for permitting, it talks about construction permitting. And it says that folks, anybody who's doing construction needs to notify folks within 500 feet of that location that a construction will be happening. Now, when that permit is given, will that 500 feet be delineated for those purposes?
So, for that one, I'm not 100% sure. Jonathan Balki was supposed to be here to do that side of it. So, I can't answer that wholly for you, but I will...
Director Rutgers is coming up.
I was going to say, I was going to harass him to show up on Wednesday to answer that.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. So, the, the 500 feet that you see there...
Could you get a little more on, on mic?
Sure.
Sorry.
So, the, the 500 feet that you see in the code there is really intended for, this is, when you have cases that people are going to be working outside of those hours, they would need that permit. And in those particular cases, we'll want them to notify, similar to what we do with our land use cases, where you basically offset that, that property boundary by 500 feet. And then they'll have to be, go out and actually notify folks in advance that, hey, we're going to be doing a concrete pour at 5:00 in the morning, one morning, or whatever the situation might be. I just use that as an example.
Great. Thank you so much. That really helped answer my question.
Counsel Olson.
Do you wake people up at 4:00 and tell them you're going to be making noise at 5:00?
No, the...
You see before...
The, the code actually has some specific requirements of how many days in, in advance they'd have to post it. Typically, we'd, we'd see these through a door hanger or something similar to that.
Thank you. I guess I missed that in here.
Yeah.
Did I answer your question?
Are you speaking to me?
Yeah, you asked a question, didn't you?
I asked a question, or no, I made a comment.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, I do have a question with, if it's okay.
Go ahead.
And maybe I'm remembering wrong, but it also affects my eyes. Is there any way you could do the offset color in blue instead of red? Is there any way? The red's a little hard to, I can see it.
I thought they went to grayscale for Counsel Olson, to be honest, but they printed out red, so I'll have to change that on my side.
Well, it's an awfully faint red to me, yeah.
So, I thought it was stuff you're taking out. I'd had to read it twice to figure out this is actually stuff you're putting in. Because when I do something, it's, the red is gone.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
My problem is red against green. Red against white is fine.
Oh, okay. The red is just hard on my eyes as opposed to the blue.
Totally understand. That is a good note for in two weeks when I'm going to punish you all with the codes coming.
Thank you. I mean, I can do it, but it's a little...
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
And if you have any other questions, I'll be here Wednesday, too, if anything comes up.
Thank you. Next, on the agenda, we're going to recess to executive session pursuant to ORS.192.660, subsection 2, subsection D, discuss labor negotiations. The meeting, City Council will now meet in executive session for the purpose, I just read that statement, representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other participants must exit. Online audience members will be moved into a waiting room. When the council returns to open session, staff will read, will readmit those remaining in the waiting room to rejoin the meeting. In-person audience members must leave the council chambers and wait in the hallway. When the council returns to open session, staff will open the doors and you can rejoin the meeting. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report any other deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision will be made in the executive session. I now recess executive session at 4:36 p.m., August 22nd. I now recess executive session at 4:36 PM, August 22nd.
Okay. Okay, so right now we're due business from the council.
Is it back on recording?
Okay, I'll start on that side of the dais.
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Olson.
Uh, nothing.
Counselor Smith. Counselor Novak, excuse me, Counselor Kopczynski.
Yes, I'd like to brag about the success for the Carousel on Saturday. It was the busiest, we think, we believe it's the busiest day that the Carousel has ever had. And it was just an absolute wonderful zoo down there with all the kids and the carnival going on. And the number of people that came through the doors. Everybody went home tired, but it was a good tired. So everybody took a nice bow and then went to sleep. So, but yeah, we'll do it again to figure out how to do it better next year.
Counselor Novak.
Nothing, thank you.
And I'm going to piggyback that comment. I was there at 6:45 AM.
Stacy, Counselor Bartholomew.
Oh, I'm sorry, where's she at? Stacy, I'm sorry, say something. Counselor Bartholomew.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, so I took a journey this past week and I went through Salt Lake City on my way home. And the Great Salt Lake is disappearing. And it's a huge, it's going to be a huge climatic issue. And so it made me think about our state, you know, and the issues around water and how the, how the drought would be affecting our state, but specifically Albany. And what, I'm just wanting a kind of a report of how, you know, our contingency plans, and I know that was part of our strategic planning, is like, how are we planning for climate change? And specifically, our capacity for water? Because the issue in Salt Lake is the intense growth that's happening and that it is utilizing a limited resource and redirecting water away from a natural resource, which actually would end up protecting the population. Because if you lose the lake, you get the heavy metals that are at the bottom of the lake now being dispersed. So that's my concern. And what I was, what I'm asking for is, is, is if we have, we can share what the staff has been doing preliminarily, because I know that's been a state requirement for us to plan for climate contingencies. Okay, so.
Thank you. Are you back home now?
I am back home, but not quite.
Ready.
I got in at 2:30 last night.
Oh, go to bed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. I would like to piggyback what Counselor Kopczynski said. I was at 6:45 at the Carousel and the number of people that started showing up was amazing. And I had to leave and take care of some personal business with my company. But when I came back and people literally were still there and it closed, and so people still wanted to participate. So it was a really good day in Albany to have that event. And then other than that, I'll save everything else for Wednesday night. City Manager, your report, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. If you remember about a year ago, the Northwest Art and Air Festival was scheduled to be held. And then within two days of it starting, we ended up having to cancel it. That was a, that was a heavy blow for, for a lot of us. But it's back. And so I hope you all have a chance to get out to the, to the festival this weekend and enjoy some of it. I got an email today with some news that was tough. Emma, Emma Dean at Helping Hands has resigned from her position. So we'll be watching as Helping Hands starts their search for a new executive director. And then lastly, the mayor had asked me to address the issue of, well, it's really parliamentary procedure, but it's really centers around business from the public. You know, in several recent meetings, there's been some confusion about business from the public. And I think we all share a desire to be professional and to be efficient with our time and to be transparent, open to the public. So I have to point out that council meetings are meetings in which the council conducts the business of the city. There is no obligation, there's no law in our charter or in law and state law to include a segment for business from the public. But, you know, you see the rows of seats here facing the dais, and the idea is that public policy is formulated in the open with people, the citizens being able to see it and hear it and see what's going on. Except for the most mundane of business matters, by the time an issue, any issue gets to the city council for a decision, it's already been through some sort of public process, either through staff outreach or through an advisory board or committee. Often, this outreach involves many, many hours of input and contributions from community members who took time out of their schedule to attend an open house or submit feedback, as well as city staff who have regularly provided professional input throughout the course of those lengthy processes. The most effective public input is submitted in writing, actually, which can then become a matter of record. So as good stewards of public resources, you, me, us as decision makers and as your staff have a responsibility to take this process into account when considering a decision on your agenda, the city has invested in this professional team and this professional approach. Public comment at city council meetings is just one of many tools in the public participation toolbox. Public input is received through various channels before an item arrives on the council agenda and is just as valid, if not much more so, than comments received at a meeting. Council meetings are public meetings, as I said, because the public has a right to hear and see policy being made. But they shouldn't become spectacles or stages on which to posture. The opportunity for public comment can't be allowed to turn into debate or into a shouting match. These are your business meetings. They're your time to debate with each other and discuss. They should be your opportunity to debate the formulation of good policy. If at any time additional material or information is required, the mechanism for directing staff to obtain that for you is there, and you should direct your staff accordingly. So I leave you at that just because we, again, we, we want to make sure that our meetings are conducted as professionally and efficiently as possible. And I think sometimes there's a tendency when these seats are filled to look at that as a chance for back and forth, which it's, it's not, it's not designed that way. And that's it, sir.
Thank you.